March 17th, March 24th, and March 31st.
On Councilor Condon's motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All approve. Minutes are... Minutes are... All opposed. Minutes are approved. Next order of business.
Application for license to drive a taxi cab, Edward Martel. Ronnie Phillips, 20 Clark Street, Malden. Stephen Kamara, 3 Mount Ida Terrace, Waltham.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is referred to license. Next order of business.
Application for livery license, Kenneth Arthur Dulong Jr., 52 Francis Street, one livery.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? License... Item is referred to license.
The petition of Comcast for the use of one existing conduit in the duct bank under the sidewalk of Commercial Street, a hearing is required.
I declare this portion of the hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anybody here who want to speak in favor of this petition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is David Green. I'm the manager of government relations for Comcast. Naturally, I'm here to speak in favor of our request. I would usually like to go over what our request is about and happy to take your questions.
Go ahead, sir.
Currently, there is a 24... There are 24 conduits in a duct bank underneath Commercial Street. Comcast wishes to use one of those conduits so that we can extend service down Commercial Street by... Therefore, provide service to businesses along Commercial Street that would be cable, telephone, and internet service, and then further extend into the city of Medford, which we also need permission from the city of Medford to go into that part of the conduit to eventually help turn on service to River's Edge, the River's Edge Development, which is in the city of Medford. We are making this request and have proposed that in consideration of your approval that we will provide service to the Department of Public Works building at 356 Commercial Street. We will provide free cable service, free installation, free cable service, determine us with our license in the city of Malden.
Is that it, Mr. Green?
That's it, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Green? Councilor Christensen? I know this is your ward. Mr. Green, I just have one question.
Sure.
When you put in this service, this pipe or conduit, do you allow other companies to use the same conduit?
No, sir. Our application is for exclusive use of that. I'm not exactly sure of the size of the pipe and the size of our cable in relation to that. However, there are 24 there and a number of other companies already have four conduits reserved for them. The city has a couple, as does Medford, and I believe there's another company with one that has exclusive use to its conduit.
I was just asking because if you would have to dig up the street twice to serve the city.
Oh, well, we're not... That's the point of this, Mr. President. We won't have to dig up the street at all by using this conduit. The alternative, if it didn't exist, was we'd be coming to you and asking for a permit to cut up the street.
Okay. I have no further questions. Counselor? Okay, Mr. Green. I don't see any questions, so we can go to the next. If anybody else is here willing to speak in favor?
Thank you very much.
Be welcome, Mr. Green. The clerk has a letter of support for the mayor.
Dear councilors, I am writing in support of Comcast's request for the use of one of the existing 24 conduits in the duct bank under the sidewalk on Commercial Street for approximately 628 feet. My support for Comcast's proposal is based on two factors. First, the installation of the cable through the conduit on Commercial Street aligns with the city's economic development goals. Comcast plant extension through the use of conduit will increase the availability of cable TV, high-speed internet, and other services to existing and future businesses along the Commercial Street route. Please note that Verizon received prior approval a few years ago to access and run fiber in this same conduit. Second, Comcast has offered to install cable TV service and provide complimentary cable service to the Malden Department of Public Works building at 356 Commercial Street for the entire term of its Malden license and any subsequent renewals. The Malden DPW site is the only municipally-owned location that is not connected via cable. Comcast has and continues to be a major employer in the city. The company employs more than 200 people at its regional customer care telephone center at 200 Commercial Street. The company has also supported numerous activities and programs benefiting Malden residents, including the beautification program and the high school athletic program. I would urge your favorable support. Very truly yours, Richard C. Howard, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask if anybody else is here to speak in support, please come forward. Seeing none and hearing none, I deem that portion of the meeting closed. If anyone is speaking here to speak in opposition against this petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Counselor Condon.
Yeah, I notice it says you've done some work for the fire departments in this letter.
The reference to the conduit of the fire department?
Yeah.
That is a conduit that has been provided through the Amysick Valley Development Commission, not by Comcast.
Oh, okay.
The conduit is reserved for the fire department.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we ended up with some mitigation to bring cable into our DPW yards. I mean, I don't see that as anything to get excited about. I don't know why we'd need it. I suppose you have to do this in order to bring cable into the rest of River's Edge, is that what this is about?
Well, the proposal to provide the DPW building with cable service, free cable service, is independent of having to reach River's Edge or any other business. The DPW building is along the route of the conduit, and we will be able, at our own cost, to bring the service and then provide continuing free service at the DPW building for emergencies. Many city departments or city buildings, in fact, all city buildings have their service available right now, and in the case of DPW, I would imagine they could use it for news, weather channel, and other emergencies, as well as the local, the public access, government and educational access channels.
Do they have the capabilities right now of the internet down the yards?
I don't know.
Not through Comcast. I don't know if they have an alternative.
Okay, thank you. You understand, Counselor? So, Mr. Green, just to play on that, so, not a problem, would that include internet too? That service that you're providing?
That is not part of the proposal, per se. We do, as a matter of goodwill, provide internet service to the public library and the schools and the public schools of Malden.
But then they'd be able to get the high speed now because it's there?
It's there. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Any other questions? Okay. So, I'll deem the seeing none and hearing none, anybody speaking against the petition, closed. On Counselor Christensen's motion to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is granted. Thank you, Mr. Green. Next order of business.
Application for temporary flower sale permit, Boy Scout troop 603, First Baptist Church, 493 Main Street, April 11th, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Counselor Neil Anderson for the paper. Counselor Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the time of year when the Boy Scouts will be doing their Easter sales, and normally a petition like this would go back to the committee for review, but it is an ongoing issue. We know it's for the Easter coming up this coming weekend, and I would urge my colleagues in the council to pass this this evening, grant this license, this special permit, so that the Boy Scouts troop 603 will be able to sell flowers during the Easter holiday.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for the chairman of licensing? So, on Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? License is granted. Next order of business.
Application for renewal of a Class II dealer's license, McMillan or Motive, 388 Eastern Ave.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is referred to license. Next order of business.
Being ordained by the Malden City Council that the revised ordinances be amended to add mechanical permit fees, councilors Anderson, Furlong, and Nestor.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer... Oh, excuse me, on Counselor John Furlong's motion to refer to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? License is... Excuse me. Motion is referred to ordinance. Still stuck on license. Next order of business.
Being ordained by the Malden City Council that Section 6.45 of the revised ordinances be amended by removing certain restrictions on used car dealers' licenses, Counselor Furlong.
On Counselor John Furlong's motion to refer to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? License is referred... Excuse me. Motion is referred to ordinance.
Being ordained by the Malden City Council that the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended to add permitting requirements for driveways and parking areas, councilors Neil Anderson, Furlong, and Nestor.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is referred to ordinance.
Resolved, it is the sense of the city council that the traffic commission install a crosswalk at the intersection of Harvard and Suffolk Streets, Counselor Neil Anderson.
On Counsel... Would like to speak, Counselor? Counselor Neil Anderson.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. This is a situation where I've had a... One of my constituents who is having a problem with people parking too close to the intersection. This man is blind, and he keeps walking into cars that are illegally parked there, and we think that this will be a good location to put a crosswalk in to further let people know that it is inappropriate for them to be parking that close to the corner. So, I would ask your support in referring this to the traffic commission.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for the sponsor? Seeing none, on Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to pass, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is passed. Next order of business.
Resolved, it is the sense of the city council that the traffic commission install a traffic signal with a push-button crossing light on Ferry Street at Uppham Street, councilors Anderson and Christensen.
Counselor Neil Anderson for the paper.
Let me speak on this one, too. Yeah, this is, as a result of some of my constituents who are concerned about the danger of their children crossing Ferry Street to get to the Ferryway School, and they're asking that the traffic commission consider putting in a push-button crossing light somewhere along there, preferably at Ferry and Uppham Street. It may turn out to be another location, but somewhere along there, we'd like to at least study that. And I'd ask that we refer this to traffic.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for the sponsor? On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to pass, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Next order of business.
To Council President Craig Sperfor and the Malden City Council from Counselor Neil Kinnon, dear councilors and... Dear Council President and fellow city councilors, I'm respectfully asking that the Efficiency Committee meeting scheduled for April 8, 2009, at 9:00 a.m. be postponed as it does not comply with the rules adopted by the council for 2009. Those rules explicitly state that committee meetings are not to begin before 5:30 p.m. Section 52 clearly shows that this meeting, even in the case of an emergency, should not be held at 9:00 a.m. and that it can only be held on another evening. The rules were put into effect to ensure that the public and other councilors who work during normal business hours will be able to attend such meetings. These rules were specifically adopted after last year's budget when a number of sessions were at times when the general working public and other councilors were unable to attend and thus determined that for transparency reasons, it was very important that committee meetings truly be open to the public, not just technically, but also in a manner that the vast majority of the public could actually attend. The scheduled meeting being held by the Efficiency Committee is with the superintendent of schools to discuss his upcoming budget. To have a meeting to discuss the most significant portion of the city's budget, approximately 50% at 9:00 a.m. is clearly the type of issue we wish to avoid when the 5:30 p.m. rule was put in place. The fact that the superintendent cannot make a later time or that we will call it an emergency because some self-imposed deadline has been put in place is not a reason to throw this body's rules aside. The appearance becomes one in which we, as a body, are trying to operate in a sphere of secrecy when clearly we are not. In our most recent interviews with people nominated to serve on boards and commissions, a question which is consistently asked is whether the interviewee would be against televising such meetings. The reason given to the interviewee is that the council would like its... Would like itself, boards and commissions, to operate in a transparent manner. If we start negating our own rules for convenience, what message are we really sending? Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I turn it over to Chairman of the Efficiency Committee, I'd just like to give a little background. I know I spoke to Counselor Kinnon several times today. I know he is traveling for his work. I felt that the reason that the chairman, as well as several other members of the Efficiency Committee, gave me over the phone was sufficient. The mayor did impose a deadline. Now, regardless of that self-imposed or not, we've all asked for the budget to be sent to us early this year because of what's going on, and the mayor would like to see the Efficiency Committee's report prior to that budget coming down to the Finance Committee. I do know the superintendent was willing to change the date. Unfortunately, his father, who I believe unfortunately is ill, is in town visiting him, and then with Easter upon us this weekend, there was a time constraint involved. I did ask the members of the Efficiency Committee if they were willing to change, and a couple members said they would, but they wouldn't be able to have that portion, which is 50% of the budget, inside that report, which we presented to the mayor as well as myself next week. So, we are kind of in a vice grip, so to say, with time, and we all would like or appreciate the budget down here sooner than later. So, I respect Counselor Kinnon's wishes. I think in this time, time is of the essence for everybody in this body. But I will turn it over to the Chairman of the Efficiency Committee...
Gary.
Excuse me. And Counselor... Gary, you want to speak first?
Yeah.
Counselor Christensen first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to let the members know, technically speaking, the counsel from Ward 6 is correct. Our rules state that any meeting but Tuesday between 5:30 and 9:00 is to be declared an emergency meeting, and it should be held... It could be held on a different night. But practically speaking, the only opportunity we have to get together with the school department is tomorrow morning. What we've done in lieu of that is we've made sure to let the public know that they have an opportunity to come tomorrow night, and they also have an opportunity to email us their thoughts and suggestions prior to our report date, which is scheduled for next Monday. So, in a perfect world, we definitely would have had the meeting at... After 5:30 on a Tuesday, but seeing the situation as it is, we just want to try and give the superintendent of schools an opportunity to talk with the committee, and so that's why I think we're suggesting to the full body that we suspend that rule so the superintendent has a chance, and then we can issue a full report, because otherwise, as indicated, to leave the school department out of our report, you know, would probably be... Wouldn't be probably a good thing when we do come out. Just to let the body know, I'm sure the chairman's going to allude to it, though. We have been meeting steadfast for the past couple of weeks. We think, you know, the committee's going to have some recommendations. So, you know where I sit? I'm a stickler on the rules, but this one, I can see the practicality of trying to, you know, suspend our rule for this one occasion, so, you know, the Efficiency Committee has a chance to talk with the school department.
Thank you, Counselor. Excuse me. Thank you, Counselor, and now Counselor Neil Anderson... Excuse me, Paul Anderson, Chairman of the Efficiency Committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. We had the debate ourselves in the Efficiency Committee, and what we come up with was very simply where we look at ourselves as going out, trying to get as much information that we can instill to the Finance Committee, who is the person that is the committee that's going to recommend the budget that is submitted by the mayor. We're really not in a position to vote on anything. We're the ad hoc committee that's supposed to be doing the legwork of the efficiency of these requests and these cuts. And originally, we had thought of going out and going to each one of the departments, splitting up the... All the departments by a third, and each one of us would go to them on their time schedule. However, Judy Bucci's committee, Gary Christensen, suggested that we do this in an open public forum rather than trying to go dig out this material so that the public would have more of an input into what was going on and give them a longer timeframe as to study the budget. This is the first time they're even seeing the budget, before the budget's even created. At this point, we're just getting information based on numbers, no hard numbers, because there is no hard numbers. The mayor is the one responsible for setting up the budget. The mayor will then submit it to the council. It'll go to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee will be holding its own meetings, and they're open to the public, and they will, I believe, as a vote of this body last year, have a public hearing on that budget. We're just doing legwork, and we understand that it was very important to have the superintendent give us some kind of a presentation so that we could then have a better idea. Making a recommendation on only 50% of the budget was kind of difficult for us to make to anybody without getting the full picture in front of us. There may be things that the school department is planning with their mandated 10% cut that we could make a recommendation to the mayor and to the Finance Committee that we thought wasn't good or is good or is wherever. Having said that, we understood the responsibility of a 5:30 meeting, and we also understood that where we're not in any official capacity to vote on anything that isn't even in existence at this point, we didn't think we were breaking any major rules. We respect the request of the council who thinks we may have and would suggest to the full body that we ask a waiver of that rule only because of the fact that we do think it is important that we have all the information. If we're holding a meeting at 6:00 in the evening, those working nights would not be able to attend, so it's a wash. We understand that more people work days than they do nights, and we expect that. But all we're going to do with the information that we gather is present it to the mayor and the Finance Committee for their dialogue of a little more detailed work into what was done and, at the same time, do it through this type of a forum where it's a meeting where the public will again hear it. Then, when the final phase has come, the budget comes down, they'll have had at least that information for a considerable amount of time that they normally don't have. So, we would hope that the committee as a whole supports us in that endeavor and respectfully requests that we waive that rule for this particular motion because of the time constraints. Our recommendation to the mayor, in order to have any impact, has got to be to him next week because he's already indicated his desire to get the budget to the full council in an earlier time than he has in the past. So, when we had the conversation with the mayor this... Two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, we kind of set up this timetable so that he would have time to not only hear from us but also put it into play before he makes his final determination, and the determination is 100% his, to present his budget to us and still get it to us on a timely fashion earlier than he has in the past so that the public is aware of the actual hard numbers. Having said that, I would thank the committee for their consideration.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Greg Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to back the Efficiency Committee on this one, just so everyone's aware. This isn't the only time the superintendent speaks on the budget. Last night, anyone watching M A TV or happened to be up in this hall here, they... He gave a lengthy discussion, and he presented his budget to the school committee. That's number one. The school committee is also going around to three different schools. I believe they're at the Ferryway tonight, if I'm not mistaken. They were at a school last week, and they'll be at Salem Wood at Linden next week. So, it's not like this is the only opportunity to hear what the superintendent has to say. And, you know, one thing we requested and we asked the mayor this year was to give us the budget as early as possible. It's very difficult to do not know, number one, what the stimulus money means, not what the state aid means. You know, it's hard to present a budget, so I don't think this is something you can't put off. If anyone truly wants to know what the school department budget is and they can't make it to the meeting tomorrow, there's a couple more opportunities. They'll rerun that... The school committee meeting from last night several times, and it gives you a very in-depth focus on what their budget is. And having sat on the school committee for six years, I would urge anybody that can to watch what their school budget, because it's a very complicated budget. There's so many mandates. You're dealing with 6,200 kids. You know, there's positions in the budget that you might say, geez, why do they need that? But if there's always... Or usually, always a good answer why they do do the things they do. So, I would urge anybody that they can to see what that budget is and learn more about what the schools and, you know, how... All the services that we do provide to kids, some that we have to and some we feel that we should. So, again, I back the Efficiency Committee on this one. It's hard this time of year to coordinate everything. I mean, we see it on Tuesday nights when we do our meetings. Every meeting's running into one another. We're running late. We're, you know, having meetings afterwards. We'll continue meetings to the following week, so I think you're on target. For those that can't make it tomorrow morning, there's definitely a few more opportunities to learn about the school budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And if I may, I just want to remind the public and as well as the council here that last year we passed a rule, which is 14... Excuse me. 14-02, which states that no less than 14 days prior to the adoption of the annual budget, the city council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed expenditures to provide residents with an opportunity to express objections to or support for specific expenditures or the programs or to propose new initiatives. So, not only will we have the school committee before the Finance Committee, which I encourage everybody on the entire council to be at for all the meetings for the Finance Committee, but as well as the public, those are public meetings, and then we have the ability or the public has the ability one more time before we adopt that budget, no less than 14 days before that budget, to come before this body as a whole. So, I think we have plenty of opportunities between now and June or July, rather, to have the public's input, and Counselor Christensen, you know, made the suggestion to me earlier today. We live in the 24th... 21st century. Email, faxing, whatever you want to do to get a member of the city council, we are eligible 24/7, especially through email. Any questions, any comments, any concerns, you can email us directly or the city council's email to the clerk, and we'd be more than willing to at least read those questions in the record, not only the Finance Committee but the Efficiency Committee. So, just because you can't attend, and you can write a letter, too, as well. So, I think that's important as well. For the general public, any suggestions, we'd be more than happy to take electronically as well. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend City Council Rule 52.01 so the Efficiency Committee can meet tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., Wednesday, April 8th, with the school department.
And Counselor, just for the application, this is suspending the rule for this one instance, correct?
Correct.
So, any questions for the sponsor?
If we could roll call that, Mr. President.
Yep. There'll be a roll call. On Counselor Christensen's motion to suspend Rule Number 5201, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Bucci, Christensen.
Yes.
Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Lucy, Nestor.
No.
Sperfor.
Yes. Next order of business?
It's suspended. Counselor.
Counselor Neil Anderson. Excuse me, Paul Anderson.
I'm... Thank you, Mr. President. I'm moving reconsideration, hoping the same will not prevail.
On Counselor Paul Anderson's motion for reconsideration, hoping that the same will not prevail, a yes vote means we'll have... Counselor?
One per... Okay. So, we're voting on this to suspend it this one time.
Correct.
This is not to suspend the ordinance.
Correct.
Right.
That's right.
Correct. We're voting on it... Oh, excuse me. Counselor Condon.
Point of information through the clerk, I believe we can vote to suspend a rule whenever we wish. You know, there may be other circumstances. We're not locked into just suspending this rule this one time. That's what was suggested.
Finalizes.
Right. I think that was said by representatives of the Efficiency Committee, but there's other rules that have been suspended.
Any other questions? So, again, we're suspending the rule one time.
No.
Just one time. We've suspended the rule only once, Counselor. Correct. So, on Counselor Paul Anderson's motion... Everybody follow the rule? So, a yes vote...
Reconsiders.
Reconsiders, a no vote finalizes. A yes vote keeps it open, and no vote finalizes. Correct? Everybody on the board?
Correct.
Counselor... Counselor, excuse me, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson. Paul Anderson, Buchi, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Lucy, Nester, Spatafora.
No. Thank you, gentlemen. Reconsideration is denied. Next order of business?
The claims of Marion Ellis, 487 Ferry Street Everett, and Carrie Railand, 25 Acorn Street, Malden.
On Counselor Greg Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to finance. Next order of business, we're on committee reports.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, two of those referred papers number 47, series of 2009, having considered the same, make the following report. Being ordained that section 3.35 of the revised ordinances be amended regarding signs, committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendments: that the word "six" be inserted into the proposed amendment in section 3.35.4.8 after the words "not exceeding" and before the words "square feet," and that the words "90 days" be deleted and the words "60 days" inserted in place thereof; that the amendment to section 3.35.10.2 be deleted and the following inserted in place thereof by adding a new section 3.35.10.3 as follows: Point 3, no ground sign shall have clearance from the ground between four feet and eight feet. Counselor Nester for the committee.
On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Jim Nester for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee met a few times over the last month concerning this paper. It just adds in slight revisions for clarification and for the wishes of some of the residents, so I would ask that this be voted out favorably.
Any questions for Counsel Nester? Seeing none on Counselor Nester's motion to amend in accordance with the committee report? Counsel, you have a question? Okay, I thought I heard something, sorry. On Counselor Nester's motion to amend in accordance with the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to enroll, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Buchi, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Lucy, Nester, Spatafora.
Yes. On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to suspend docket rules, all those in favor? All those opposed? Rules are suspended. On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to ordain, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Buchi, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Lucy, Nester, Spatafora.
Paper is ordained. Next order of business?
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, two of those referred papers number 116, series of 2009, having considered the same, make the following report. Being ordained that the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended by adding a new section 2.13A relative to the mayor's authority to negotiate labor contracts. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendment: that the following sentence be added at the end of the section. Prior to any vote on any executed contract, the mayor shall provide each member of the council with a copy of said contract. Counselor Nester for the committee.
On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Nester for the committee.
Hi, Mr. President. At this point, I would like to turn over the floor to the sponsor, Counsel Christensen.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Christensen for the paper.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And the committee recommendation stems from a series of meetings that we've had in the past months about labor contracts. And committee met, went over the proposal, and as you could tell tonight, recommended unanimously. The first thing I tried to do was, once the committee took the action, was to make sure all the members had a copy of the proposal, which I hope you do tonight. It's a very short proposal, but I think it has a lot of meaning for this body. And what it basically does is brings the council into the process of at least being notified when labor contracts are going to be negotiated. As some of you may recall, when the labor contracts came down from the mayor, December, January, there were some of us that I think had an idea they were coming, some of us that had an idea of what the cost was, and there were some that didn't. So what this proposal would do is, next time labor contracts are going to be negotiated, the mayor would meet us in executive session and let us know that he is going to commence, he or she is going to commence negotiations, what the estimated cost might be and where those funds will come from. We would then all be on the same page knowing going forward what the impact might be down the road, as opposed to now, which is, you know, the packets are dropped down here, we really haven't, some of us might not have been involved, and all of a sudden it might change the financial outlook for some of us as to what we thought things were in the city budget. The other thing, as you could tell by the amendment, that some of us have contested over the years is, once the contract is negotiated and funded, to get copies of the contracts. I know some of us for years have had different results in trying to get an actual copy of the contract. So I'd be happy to take any questions, but this is a direct result of, you know, some of the discussion we've had the past several months about trying to get on the same page with respect to what are some, you know, significant cost items for us year after year.
Any questions for the sponsor? I have one and just for my own information. I believe Counselor Fraser has a question that.
Sure.
In the past, when the contracts came down, they were negotiated in good faith by both parties. So, and they were executed and signed, so we couldn't say as a body, stop doing this contract because at this point it was already done.
No.
Now we have the ability at least to see these prior to them being executed and we have a say, hopefully, in the process going forward. Correct, counselor?
Yeah, it's strictly informational. You know, just so, again, we can all be on the same page, that the process is commencing, this is what the range of cost might be, and this is where the funds are going to come from. Again, there's nothing appropriated at the beginning of the fiscal year, which was a separate discussion we had, but we ended up sticking with the paper before you. And this would at least give us an opportunity to ask those questions without having to find out after the fact, which by then, as you know, during the past several months, is too late.
No further questions? Counsel Buchi. Sorry, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this may be for Counselor Christensen for clarification. Tonight you're stating it's for informational purposes and just to, for my clarification from Counselor Spatafora, we're not, you're saying we could halt discussions or have some input into the actual negotiation? I just need that clarified.
Sure.
So for purposes of information, which we already get.
Yep.
But I understand what you're trying to do tonight in terms of restructuring that, and I'm not against that. But I just got confused with a comment that, between the two of you chatting.
Sure.
So I want that clarified. Is it for informational purposes and we do not actually review a document that's in play and then decide that we're going to alter that document?
Yeah, from where I sit, informational purpose only. You know, just, you know, get up the home plate, listen, this is what is coming down the road, these are the parameters I'm thinking about, information only. We have no other role after that except when the contracts come down to us to be voted on.
Yeah, all right. I understand that now. It just confused me for a moment, that's all.
Well, I think my point was too, that at this point, right now, usually we see the contracts after they've been signed. At least at this point, informationally, we'll see them before they'll be executed, hopefully. Now, we have the ability after it's executed as far as create the ordinance and funding it, which we have now.
No disrespect, Mr. President, I don't see it that way. It's, you know, no disrespect, Mr. President. Again, it's information, we don't play another role until after they come down. Right, I wouldn't want to see it before he sends them down, I wouldn't want to see it three quarters of the way down. I just want to know at the beginning of the process, this is the range of funding, again, the simple things that we've all been asking about the past several months and years for that matter, and that would be the only role that we would play. Everybody's on the same page, everybody knows what kind of costs we're talking about, and everybody knows where it's going to come from in the budget. So, and we actually, Counsel Buchi too, the second paragraph, you know, thanks to our city clerk, played a big role in drafting this, we made very sure to say informational purposes only, we play no other role in the process except just us all having a chance at the same time.
Counselor Condon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the years, we've been very, very careful not to get involved with any kind of negotiations as a body because we've had unions come up here and try to bring us into discussing the contracts, and we've always avoided because it would leave us open to unfair labor practice, I'm sure. So collective bargaining is what it is, it's done out from the mayor and his team and human resources, so I totally understand what the former council president is saying.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Furlong, shutting you off. Oh, sorry, counselor.
That's okay. The only reason why I was talking about this, and I'm not going to support the paper, but we can only cut on the budget purpose, we can't, all we can do is cut, we can't add. So negotiations, I think there was a little miscommunication between you and the sponsor, but I agree with Counsel Condon, I get the information now and I have faith in the team that negotiates contracts and anytime I wanted to ask them a question, I have them there and I can talk to them, so, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Christensen again? Did you hit the light?
I got one.
Oh, I'm sorry, counselor. Counsel DePietro.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel President. I'm a little confused here after your comment to the sponsor of the paper, that isn't your comment, that isn't what I voted on in committee, and it was strictly for informational purposes only and not to do anything after we got the informational purposes, only to file it away for our own personal reference. So is that, as a point of clarification before I vote, is that the intent, that's the intent of the paper, isn't it? Okay. I was just a little confused there because we're not to get involved in, I agree with Counselor Condon and Counselor Furlong, that we're not, it's not our role to get involved in negotiations here at all, so, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Christensen.
Just to reiterate, the paper says to the second paragraph, strictly informational purposes only. You know, once he meets with us in executive session, he or she then goes and negotiates, we don't do anything until he files the papers with us and then we get into finance. To Counsel Furlong's point, again, this is what I'm trying to make sure we all have an opportunity. Now Counsel Furlong might have a chance to have an idea that contracts are coming, some of us might not. The way I've been voting the past couple of years, I certainly do not. But, you know, a case in point tonight is, in finance, you know, we had a paper that was submitted last week for collective bargaining costs for, I forget the amount, it was a little over $300,000, when I think some of us thought that two weeks ago or three weeks ago, we had voted the contracts, you know, that was it for the fiscal year and beyond. But again, because I don't think we had that opportunity to speak with the administration early on, we didn't know this cost was going to be before us tonight. And so I think that's what we're trying to, you know, hopefully going forward, make sure we all know, you know, upfront, what are the parameters that we're talking about, you know, down the road. So that's the only idea behind it. You know, and we debated too, whether it might work, it might not work, but, you know, figure it's worth a shot, you know, going forward. Thank you.
Any other questions for the sponsor? Hopefully not from me. On Counselor Condon's, excuse me, on Counselor Nester's motion to amend in accordance with the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? So noted, Counsel Furlong said no. On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to enroll, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Buchi, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Lucy, Nester, Spatafora.
On Counselor Jim Nester's motions to suspend docket rules, all those in favor? All those opposed? Any notes? Okay. On Counselor Condon's motion, Counselor Nester's motion to ordain, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Buchi, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Lucy, Nester, Spatafora.
It is ordained, paper is ordained. Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, two of those referred papers number 68A and 103, the mayor's appointments of Lorraine Dank and Vance Veratusco to the Malden Planning Board, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends that these appointments be confirmed. Counselor Nester for the committee.
On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Jim Nester. I just don't like you tonight, counselor.
I know. Thank you, Mr. President. We, the ordinance committee met last week and we had both candidates in for interviews. A number of questions were posed and presentations were made, and the ordinance committee feels that these are viable candidates and I would recommend or make a motion that they be voted on favorably.
Any questions for the sponsor? None? On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to confirm, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Buchi, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Lucy, Nester, Spatafora.
Yes. So congratulations to Lorraine Dank and Vance Veratusco.
The Standing Committee on Finance, two of those referred papers number 129, series of 2009, having considered the same, make the following report. Ordered that the sum of $395,869 be transferred from free cash to various departmental accounts. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Counselor Lucy for the committee.
On Counselor Greg Lucy's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counsel Lucy for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the kind of a result of what Counsel Christensen and the conversation just took place, but these were negotiated by the mayor, this is the final, the end to this year's negotiation session with all the unions, so this is money that's been signed on and agreed upon and it's coming out of free cash to transfer to those various accounts.
Thank you, Counsel Lucy. Any questions for the finance chairman? Any questions? Counselor Paul Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a long discussion in finance over it and in light of the paper we just passed, and I know that a couple of members of the committee had questions and then members of the council had questions. One of them was by Counsel Christensen, to table to allow us to understand fully, he still doesn't fully understand what and where those funds are going. I don't fully understand because we haven't got the full parameters. I don't have a problem with going forward funding those because we have no option, as was explained to us without a doubt, that the mayor negotiates it, he finds where the monies come from and we vote yes. But I think Counselor Christensen raised some good questions in that at least we should know where it's going, and that's the paper we just passed earlier here with the new ordinance. So if and after the, all the members have had an opportunity to speak, I would have no problem to asking, we tabled this for one week until all the members have had the opportunity to fully understand, unless someone can tell us why that can't happen.
Counsel Furlong.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we call the controller, could I ask the controller a question, if that's okay?
Any questions? Any? Any, does anybody have any opposition for Mr. Formato to speak? I don't see any. Mr. Formato.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Mr. Formato.
The money that we're talking about tonight, is this the money that they've been waiting for since January?
They have.
And this is the one they've been paying their insurance on? Their insurance increases went up in January and they, that's not retroactive, the money they lost that they've been charged with insurance, right? They're just, the only thing that's retroactive is the money they've been out salary-wise? Is that correct?
No, this, this is the, the portion of the contract that they negotiated, dealing with their longevity, dealing with the EMT, dealing with their DFIB. If you look at it, there are three departments that are involved, police, fire and DPW. They are, you know, concerned about the retro. I'm sorry that Mr. Tomajin is not here to answer particular questions because, you know, he, he has more information on, on this contract than I do. But these are monies that are due, both the fire, police and DPW personnel, retroactive to July 1st of 2008. They did receive their 2% and 1%, 1% increase. That was also part of negotiated raises, but this is another item of their contract that's over and above the 2% and 1% increase.
But what I've been hearing from all parties is that they've been paying the higher insurance rate since January and they haven't received their monies as of yet. So since January, they've been paying a higher insurance rate and not having the salary. So I would hope that we go forward with this paper tonight, just for that reason alone. Thank you.
Speak of the devil, Mr. Tomajin. I make the motion to have Mr. Tomajin come before the council. Any questions? Any, any objections from the council? Counselor Paul Anderson?
I just, I just had a point of clarification so that we're not confused. This portion of the monies is for benefits. They did receive their retro checks for their salaries already.
I could not say that as a fact, Counselor. I don't know if the control, the control is shaking, he has, the salary portion of the retro check has been paid to all bargaining unit members, for all the bargaining units.
And in that retro check, they did take out of the retro check, the 1.5% increase back to July, not January 1st on the employee share of the health insurance, correct?
Back to July 1st on the health, the health insurance, employee portion increased as of July 1st to 17.5%. The new co-pay schedule.
Okay.
For the doctors' visits, the emergency room visit and the prescription drug benefit went into effect January 1st.
Okay.
And while we had agreements with most of the bargaining before then, Hobbit's program couldn't pick and choose which members or which bargaining members they could apply the old co-pays and the new co-pays to. So we made a decision that everybody was paying the new co-pays as of January 1st, even though they hadn't had signed ratified contracts for. So they were paying the new co-pay schedule as of January 1st. So if they went to the doctors on January 2nd, instead of a $5 co-pay for doctors, it's that they were paying $15. Yet the retro check that they negotiated maybe in December or January, or the rates they negotiated had not been kicked in. In fact, they got the check a week ago, the retro check, Tom? The retro check came a week ago. So they were paying the co-pays as of January 1st, but they didn't actually see the increase in the rate of pay until sometime in March of this year. And then they did get a retro, then the two retro checks, there were two, most of them were a retro check back to July 1st and then a second retro check January 1st. So well, it wasn't a straight 2% and 1% across the board. There was one that kicked in in July and one that kicked in in January.
Thank you, Counselor. And Mr., Mr. Lucy? Counselor Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I know there's a table motion on the, on the floor. A table, a suggestion of a table, but I, you know, I wouldn't in support of that. You know, we voted it out of committee. You know, we have a paper that we voted on tonight to probably clarify some of this stuff going forward. You know, it's out there, so, you know, I certainly wouldn't support the table.
Any other questions? We have Mr. Formato, as well as the mayor's assistant in front of us. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a light, that's why. Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Christensen. Don't move, Charlie.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, police, fire, DPW. What are the parameters on the police, fire, DPW longevity pieces? This is the point I was trying to make. Last week, there was an amount submitted, a whole number. This week, we got a breakdown of what the whole number was, lump sums. But I guess this is the point I'm trying to make, that, you know, what does it represent? For instance, longevity? How does it work? What is it?
It's the negotiated contract between the city and the different bargaining units and each bargaining unit is separate and distinct, has different longevity payments, has different payments as sick buybacks, amount of vacation that they earn. Some of the money, as I said in committee, is factored into now that their rate of pay has increased, their longevity is tied to the rate of pay. Their overtime rates obviously are tied to their own rate of pay, so now their rates of pay has increased and their, the overtime that they had worked since July 1st should have been paid at a different rate of pay. In the DPW, for instance, they, most of the employees have a commercial driver's license, of which they are paid a stipend. That stipend gets paid with their overtime rate as well. So that has increased based on the fact that their rate of pay has increased. So that all has to get factored in. The lump sum number that may have been presented a week ago was based on numbers prepared by the IT department as it went into put in, as they, you know, there's a formula they put into factor what everybody was supposed to, should have earned. Mr. Formato then says he's going to look at all the individual salary accounts and make sure that the money goes into the appropriate account to pay the individuals in the appropriate departments. Those numbers are all based on what Mr. Formato calculates and needs to be put in those various accounts to pay the money that's due out based on the negotiated pay increases. And again, the longevity payments are different for each department. The non-union employees, for instance, don't get longevity any longer. So again, it's, it's each individual contract. And again, they're all, I heard you mention earlier, I think it was in committee about the contracts and a lot of times when the contracts get negotiated, new contracts are not signed, they're just, members of them are just standing, they get attached to the back of the contract, or the actual contract that we have could be, could have been signed in 1999 with a successive series of MOUs attached to the back. And for the last several years, the only thing that's changed pretty much is wages and insurance, contribution to insurance. I mean, there've been three paragraphs basically in a lot of these over the past.
Mr. Tomajin, these, this vote we're taking tonight is on new benefits. This isn't from old language from 10 years ago. I mean, these are, these are new?
Not necessarily. Again, there's different, and I don't have the benefit of having the paper in front of me, but there are changes to some of how longevity gets paid in some contracts. There's overtime, again, the overtime is the overtime. Longevity payouts have changed over the years, successive series, I mean, sometimes the fight department, sometimes the police department, sometimes for the superior offices. Again, there's, there are sick buyback provisions in there, so different groups don't use all their sick time, they can have an opportunity to sell it back. It's all tied into things like vacation give backs with people that are taking advantage of longevity, increased longevity, have to give back vacation days. So there's a whole series of factors, but they're different in each individual contract.
Yeah, I would just say, thank you, Mr. Tomajin. But to the members, it's coming out free cash. It's going to put us in a, you know, more difficult position next fiscal year, but hopefully, as the Finance Chair said tonight, you know, going forward, we have an opportunity to know all this, you know, prior to, to us having a vote on, on these kinds of provisions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. No other lights? Counselor Anderson, was that a motion?
A thought?
A thought.
Hint?
A thought.
So on Counselor Lucy's motion to adopt, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson.
Yes.
Paul Anderson. Bucci.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
DePietro.
Yes.
Furlong. Lucy. Nestor. Spatafora.
Yes. Next order of business, and when you think it went away, comes right back. All right, we'll go there. Yeah, let's go, we'll go there, okay. There's another one.
On dispensation of docket rules, be hereby ordained, the revised ordinances of 1991 be further amended regarding custodian salaries. Counselor Nestor.
On Counselor Jim Nestor's motion to suspend docket rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Rules are suspended. You ready? On?
There you go. Thank you, Mr. President. This is just the change of the ordinance to reflect the finance paper that was just presented to the council.
Correct. And if I may jump in, Counselor Nestor is filling in for Counselor Kenan, which he was notified earlier. This paper is, again, just to reflect the rules, the ordinances that we have to change to reflect the pay increase. As everybody knows, you need an ordinance to equal the pay and all we're doing now is making, making the ordinance reflect the pay changes that the custodians will receive. So any questions? On Counselor Nestor's motion to enroll, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson.
Yes.
Paul Anderson. Bucci. Christensen.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
DePietro.
Yes.
Furlong.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes.
Nestor.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes. On Counselor Jim Nestor's motion to suspend docket rules, for the purpose of ordaining, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? On Counselor Jim Nestor's motion to ordain, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson.
Yes.
Paul Anderson. Bucci.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
DePietro.
Yes.
Furlong. Lucy.
Yes.
Nestor. Spatafora.
Yes. Paper is ordained. Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Paper Number 121, Series of?
Okay. Counselor John Furlong's motion to move for reconsideration, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Do we have to work on?
You're hoping the same will not prevail? So.
A no vote would finalize it, a yes vote would make it continue.
So now.
On Counselor John Furlong's motion to?
We're both tied together, aren't we? Because I asked this first because we didn't ordain the first paper because I was told it was both tied together, so we have to ordain the second paper. Is that correct?
We ordained, we ordained?
We enrolled the first paper. We never ordained?
The first paper was a transfer, we adopted it. The second paper was custodian salary schedule, which was both enrolled and ordained.
Okay. So it'd be the second paper then? Do I need to do that on either of my yes? What would be the question?
I don't think you need to.
Okay.
If you want to, you can do it on both of them.
At once? Okay. I'll take the?
Hoping the same does not really want to do it. Okay. So you can do it as always. No vote is to finalize.
Yeah, no vote finalized.
It's on both, the transfer and this one, it's on ordinance.
So counsel, if you could just say your motion one more time?
We can say the same will not prevail, reconsideration.
Okay. So on Counselor John Furlong's motion to reconsideration, hoping that the same will not prevail, a no vote?
On both.
On both, excuse me, on both, the finance paper and the transfer.
Right.
On the transfer. Everybody clear?
Mm-hmm.
A no vote would finalize it, a yes vote would make it continue. Clerk will call the roll?
Okay. Counselor Neil Anderson.
No.
Paul Anderson.
No.
Bucci.
No.
Christensen.
No.
Condon.
No.
DePietro.
No.
Furlong.
No.
Lucy.
No.
Nestor.
No.
Spatafora.
No.
So reconsideration's denied.
Reconsideration is denied.
Mr. President, for the benefit of the listening audience, would you explain to people why we're going through this reconsideration, hoping that the same will not, will not?
Be in effect.
Well, let me, let me do it. It's, it's so that the paper gets finalized. We've gone through these procedures and asking for reconsideration, hoping the same will not prevail, allows the thing to be put to bed and we're finalized it. Otherwise, if we didn't do this, there could be somebody on the council that could, within, what is it, 48 hours?
24.
24 hours, put it in a paper, asking that be reconsidered and the whole thing would be back on the table before us. So that's what this is all about.
Thank you, Counselor.
Is that right?
Correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't know if you were asking the sponsor or myself, but that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Next order of, Counsel?
Nope.
Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Paper Number 121, Series of 2009. Having considered the same, make the following report. Order that the Finance Committee review options for water billing. Committee recommends that the city will vote to quarterly water bills. Counselor Lucy for the committee.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel Lucy for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We actually have gone back and forth with this for a couple of weeks now. It was four to one to go back to the quarterly. I had voted to keep it on the monthly, certainly understanding why you would go to the quarterly. I just felt that, you know, we just, probably about eight or nine months ago, we went back to the monthly. Personally, I like the quarterly, but I think the monthly's better for some people. You know, there's some learning curves during the beginning. I just felt, you know, the system's in place to keep on moving forward and, you know, some people do prefer the monthly bill. The bills tend to be less, it's, they're easier to manage, so I voted no on it. But, you know, certainly can see the other side of the, the coin, the savings to the city for postage and meters and, you know, things of that nature, but I also thought maybe that should have been taken into consideration before we went to, went to monthly. So it did come out favorably, four to one, and I certainly appreciate the other, the other four votes. Thank you.
Any questions for the sponsor? Counselor Christensen?
Just a statement, I just want to thank the folks that had weighed in through the neighborhood email system.